When we can finance to with a lease purchase.
There is a motion and a second.
Roll call.
Is there, there's, I, I made the motion to, uh, do the friendly amendment. Is there a second?
No.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor, Mr. Dilge.
There's a motion on the floor, Mr. Dilge, I get it, and I made it, and I made a friendly amendment to the motion that's out there to include, to have this done as a lease purchase. And I did that in the form of a motion. Is there a second on it?
Yeah, and Mr. Dilge has declined that amendment. You have to vote on his motion first.
Then it's over with at that point, then there is no friendly amendment to it, Randy. I know that better.
I don't know how people are gonna vote.
There's a motion and there's a second, and then we're gonna do a roll call, and how do you do the friendly amendment?
Then you make a new motion. If this motion fails.
Guys, this is wrong. This is really wrong, how you're doing this. This is really, really wrong. You're not doing the right thing for the city. Hold on to our money in case we actually have another emergency that comes up, and we have no guarantee if we move forward with this lead grant, that we're gonna get reimbursed for the money or not. We need to spend our money wisely. This is just not a wise move to do, to spend it in one shot.
This was a very wise plan, implemented carefully, executed beautifully, and now it's time to pull the trigger. That's it.
Why didn't, now, Mr. Dilge, that's your opinion, it's wrong. I've, I've said this.
We've been doing the right thing for over two years, so that at this moment, we could buy this truck.
I have said this for year after year. The county has been doing lease purchase, and that's the way to go. It's the most cost-effective way to do it.
Well, then, put it in next year's budget, and maybe you'll be able to.
We're not gonna buy another truck next year, Mr. Dilge.
That's not what, the way that we planned this purchase. That is not how we planned.
When this truck, when this truck gets delivered, we gotta pay for it in full. It's not prudent. Not everybody in this community is rich, and the same thing, like, if you're gonna buy a vehicle, nobody just simply pays cash worth, they finance it.
I make a motion, we end the debate. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call on this vote here.
Which vote? Till end of debate?
Uh, yeah, whatever one you want it to be, Randy. I wanted to make a fun, friendly moment, and you said you've gotta wait till the damn thing is done, so here we are, we're not gonna be able to do it. I'm getting baited it again.
We have a special motion to purchase a truck. Made a motion by Mr. Dilge and seconded by Mr. Olson.
And we should also include the person.
And Mr. Dilge said that, uh, Mr., uh, the Mayor of Venezuela wanted a friendly amendment, and Mr. Dilge said no. Now there's a second motion to say that they're gonna end the debate. Mr. Dilge made that motion, and Mr. Olson seconded the motion, so that is to end this debate.
That's a priority motion, there's no debate on it.
Okay, then we have to vote.
Roll call.
Mr. Dilge.
Yes.
Mr. Olson.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Vinesia.
I'm going to abstain. This is, this is not the right way of how this should be done. This is not right.
This is the motion to close debate.
No, this is the motion to purchase a truck. Because you said that there wasn't any, the, the, the debate was not something that we should vote on. There's no debate on it, is what you said.
Yeah, but, no, no, you vote on it, you can't debate it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I stand corrected then. All right.
So, so the, the motion on the floor is to close the debate.
The motion has already been passed, Randy, that they're, they're voting to spend, we already bought the truck.
Now, we gotta end the debate. Is there, is there a roll call on that, or always, whatever?
I, I already asked for a roll call, and you, and you just did a roll call, and I said I abstained.
Okay. Now, we can.
My motion is, now there's a motion, on the main motion, which is to purchase the truck.
Mr. Dilge?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mayor Vinesia?
Once again, I have to abstain. This is not the right way to purchase this truck. We need a truck, but this is not the way to do it. I will abstain. I will not be a part of depleting our entire capital account, and then we're gonna have no money left in it. Not a smart thing. Not smart.
I, I have to clear the record, Mayor, because it kinda reflects on me, but I can tell you that, I don't know of a municipality that, that leases, except generally, they may consider leasing leased cars. But this is how most municipalities that I've worked with do it.
Then call the county administrator, see what Jerry Duff Ross says.
I am gonna call the county now, I'm gonna call it better now, I'm not calling.
I thought we ended the, the debate.
Yeah, this issue is done. I make a motion, we buy a copy machine.
Just reflecting on him.
I get a second?
Second.
Moving along down the line here. We have a, uh, Resolution forty-seven to approve the loan contract.
We already made a motion to buy a copy machine.
I didn't hear what you said, because everybody was talking.
Mr. Dilge made a motion, and I made a second, to buy a copy.
What is the resol-, what is the resolution number?
Forty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Purchase a copy machine for three thousand dollars. To rebuild one, we need it. This one's ten, eleven years old, we can't get parts.
Roll call, roll call.
Mr. Dilge?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mayor Vinesia?
Yes.
Next is the, uh, contract for loan needs.
Number forty-seven, I make the necessary motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dilge?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mayor Vinesia?
Yes. Moving down the line here, we have forty-nine, uh, the contract one.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. I'm sorry.
I make a motion, we pass the acting clerk's salary adjustment.
To what? To what?
Three hundred dollars a week. No.
It ge-, it goes to one hu-, one hundred additional dollars a week, and then three hundred dollars due to the meeting.
I'm sorry. Yes, an additional one hundred dollars a week, on top of what he's paid now.
I, I don't necessarily really agree with the, uh, being paid additional for the meeting.
Okay, so, look, just for the sake of the record, I made a motion, Mrs. Owen seconded it, correct?
You're right.
Okay.
Then go ahead, roll call, roll call.
No, go ahead, Mayor, you wanna discuss it, discuss it. I, I just wanna make sure I'm seconded.
No, there's no sense in discussing. I don't, I don't agree with the, uh, paying additionally for the meeting. The extra, the hundred dollars a week, yes, but to pay an additional for the meetings, I just don't think that that's what we should do. And, and Judge's been a friend of mine for many years, more than twenty-five. I just don't think that, I, I, I don't agree with that. Sorry.
I'm confused, I, I don't, maybe you know more about this than I do. What, please, give us some background and we'll hear.
Never mind, roll, roll call, roll call, Nelson. Roll, roll call, please.
Mr. Dilge?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mayor Vinesia?
Yes, for the extra hundred dollars a week, and, uh, abstain for the, uh, three hundred dollars for the extra, for the meetings.
That's.
That's, that's three hundred dollars.
That's not the motion.
That wasn't in the motion, that's what he's already being paid. We're giving another hundred dollars.
Uh, exactly, is there, he's getting, the motion, the, the resolution, Mr. Dilge, if you read it, it's a hundred dollars a week additional on top of what he's currently getting, and that's what you just voted on, plus an additional three hundred dollars a week.
Oh, it's three hundred dollars a meeting, you're right, I'm sorry, you're, you're absolutely right, for, for council meeting. But, a, and now that the vote's done, it, it's moot, however, Mayor, uh, what made that most palatable for me was that it's only gonna exist for one or two meetings.
I understand.
If we're, if we're ambitious in hiring a clerk, it's, it's only gonna, you know, it's this meeting and the next one, and that's it.
We're gonna meet, we're gonna move the meeting along, okay? We have done the, uh.
Brother, we're saving what we had committed to Ms. Blumenthal for those meetings.
We're doing, we've already done Resolution fifty. Number forty-nine is very convoluted looking here to me, because I have it, but it doesn't have the price of what the, um, it's got something entirely different.
If I can take a look at it. This came from me, because for the last month, there's been three.
It's not, in fact, I don't even have forty-nine in here. I'll tell you what I got. I have thirty-four, thirty-six. What, what's the amount of money for the gutters?
One thousand and fifty dollars.
Just to put gutter guard.
Gutter guard, you clean it out.
But yet, somebody did the Rizley School next door and charged eight hundred dollars, and that was a lot more work and more materials to do. Why the hell is this so much?
I don't know if it was that much more work or not. I mean, just putting up this, this gutters. Do they restore the same gutters, or?
So this is, this is a thousand dollars to do just gutter screens, put on the entirety of City Hall, is that correct?
But, yes, but they have to clean it out first, to make it all out. You know, clear out all the debris.
Sounds like, sounds like.
Well, I got a quote three years ago when I suggested this from the gutter guys, and it was approximately the same amount, right around a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I did it on my house, it was nine dollars a foot. How long's that building?
It's gotta be at least, I would say, fifty foot.
It'd be a hundred foot both sides, that's at least nine hundred, plus a hundred to clean the, clean them out, that sounds, you know, semi-reasonable to me. It doesn't sound like we're being taken advantage of.
That's what I thought.
Somebody make a motion. I just kinda thought it was a little high, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think everything costs more than we think it's gonna cost. I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dilge?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mayor Vinesia?
Yes. Uh, we have Resolution fifty-two to appoint the deputy tax collector.
Fifty-one, purchase the, for adjustment price. And.
And what is that adjustment price? Cause I saw that we put two doors on there.
No, that was for Peter Lumber, let me, uh, let me give you that one too, so.
So, why don't I have all my resolutions here? I mean, I just, they're hard to budge, I have some here and some not.
I make copies and check the, for the agenda, so I don't know one.
I go from forty-eight to fifty-two.
So some of them, uh, the solicitor sent over, which was the court one and the deputy tax collector. What happened with these doors, this has been going on for like three months, but we discovered that after uh, submitting the quote, or submitting the, uh, the low price to a Jersey door, I noticed that it didn't say a two-inch door. So I went back to the fella, increased our bid, and he, he said I made a mistake on the quote. And he didn't quote the proper door, it was inch and three quarters or something. So then, I went back to the other vendor and asked them to re-quote, but also we wanted windows in the doors. So, they didn't have window spec. Bottom line is, is that the lowest two vendors re-quoted this, and the price is an additional seven hundred and ten dollars, which I can certify from the buildings and grounds capital count, but it is still lower than the other quotes that we, we received, and it's getting the door that we want, which is a two-inch thicker door, which is a standard door, uh, to help keep the heat and whatnot in, and plus, it's a much sturdier door. So Jeff and I went through this, it took us a while to get back and forth because the contractor didn't get back to me, vice versa, and I didn't stay up with it. Finally, I pinned it down, and this is where we're at. So all we're doing is just making an adjustment to this price, so that we can get these doors finally ordered.
So, we're gonna spend somewhere as around fifty-seven thousand dollars to buy a truck, which the council just voted on. We're gonna need an additional six thousand dollars for plow, on or about.
No, the plows included with the fifty-seven thousand.
The plows included, and the salt dog is?
The salt dog is part of the money that we allocated in that budget.
And that's how much, and that, how mu-, how much is that salt dog?
Probably around fifty-eight hundred dollars.
So six thousand dollars for, uh, a salt dog, now eleven, thirteen thousand dollars for garage doors?
Well, we already approved thirteen thousand.
We don't have much money in our, uh, capital account.
No, we already approved the thirteen thousand and seventy dollars. All we're approving tonight is an additional seven hundred and ten dollars to add to this purchase order.
Has anyone made a motion to open this up to discussion, so that we can start talking about it? Has there been a motion?
I'd be more than glad to give a day of my, uh, time to, uh, paint them doors next door. That's all they need, is a coat of paint. There's nothing wrong with them doors.
I make, I, I make, all right, Mr. Moore, how much is the increase in cost again, the difference, just how much more is it?
Seven hundred and ten dollars.
I make a motion, we enhance that, that, uh, the existing resolution by seven hundred and ten dollars and get these doors ordered. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dilge?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Vinesia?
No, I didn't vote for it the first time, and I'm not voting for it a second time, I think it's foolish. I'll put it on record, I'll go next door and I'll paint them doors myself. That's all they need, is a coat of paint, but there's no deterioration in them doors. There is just none.
The doors are in terrible shape, they're very difficult to open, very difficult to close, and they pass a lot of air, and they need to be replaced, and what they're doing.
Uh, they need, they need a, a, a door sweep, a, a rubber door sweep, a two-inch sweep, which shouldn't cost no more than eight bucks.
I make a motion to end discussion about the doors.
Yeah, I, I make a motion, I make a motion to, uh.
Keep spending my, just make a motion to do that.
Resolution fifty-two, twenty-twenty-one, we already voted.
And I voted no. Moving down the line here.
There's a motion after Resolution fifty-two.
Moving down the line here, we have, uh, Motion fifty-two.
Second.
Thank you.
That is to appoint the deputy tax collector. Randy, I thought we already did this, I don't know why, you had said that any deputies, I have the ability to do that, to hire?
No, under the state statute, it's, it's council's appointment.
We already have her there, and I, I certainly am pleased to have, uh, Kathy Corney there, still. I'll make the necessary motion. Is there a second?
We already have a first and a second.
We have a first and a second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dilge?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mayor Vinesia?
Yes. Department reports, we're going to hold off on that, cause I don't have any reports of any kind, not for this month, not for last month. Old business, we have animal hoarding, that's already been covered. I'm going to encourage the, uh, uh, code committee to research and see what you come up with about what the young lady had said to us tonight from, uh, Shore Animal Control. I think Linda was spot on with what she said, and I think it would be incumbent upon the city to adopt such an ordinance. We are aware of, I think there's two situations in town going on. They're getting cleaned up slowly but surely, but we don't need to have yet another location, it's an isolated area. And then lo and behold, coming to find out, we got a real problem. So, I hope that the count, the committee will do that. Uh, lots sold to Paul Demodica, Randy. This is a, uh, conversation that I would like you to limit, so that if you can get this out the door, we're going four or five minutes. But what do we, you know, he, he's requested to purchase these properties. I think, is it my understanding, there's a total of thirty-four of them, that he's looking to do?
This is the request from, uh, Mr. Demodica, um, it came in November twenty-second. These are the identified, identified lots. This is from, I, I believe, Mr. Mancini, and I, I was hoping he was gonna be here tonight. Um, he had, he had some thoughts on, on, wha-, what's happening here is, I believe, the development rights, if you look at this, uh, at, at this, this map, and there's three of them, uh, Mr. Demodica owns, uh, certain lots, and they are in, uh, they are in, he, he, they're in red.
Those are the lots that he owns.
They're the lots that he owns. The lots in yellow are the city-owned lots, and this map is twenty-three through twenty-six. Um, and what he's doing is, what he's doing, I believe, is transferring development rights from the lots that he buys from the city to, uh, to his own property. Um, and then here, th- this is sort of an odd purchase, because he's proposing to purchase two lots that, uh, break up the rest of the block. Um, and then on this one, it's a little more uniform. Mr. Mancini expressed concerns to me that council should be aware that the development rights are being transferred, essentially making the, uh, the lots that are, are being removed, the rights are being removed from, uh, undevelopable. So his concern was the pattern, and, and this isn't the first time that Mr. Demodica has made this, these acquisitions and transferred these development rights. So, I wish that he was here, he had a better understanding. You may want to, uh, have your engineer look at this um, in light of Mr. Mancini's concerns. I am not a land use lawyer, so I'm not going to pretend to be able to explain this all to you, except that I do know rights are being transferred from some lots to other lots, to make them subject of development. I believe what Mr. Demodica does is he purchases houses that are proposed to be torn down in Avalon and Stone Harbor, and moves them out to Eck, to Estelle Manor, and, and puts them on lots that are undersized, uh, and then he transfers development rights to those undersized lots to make them deliable. I, I hope I'm expressing that correctly.
My suggestion would be this, Randy. I think that we're gonna have another, uh, workshop meeting, and I would propose that, uh, Mr. Olson and I, we're on the, uh, land evaluation committee, I think we should meet with the tax assessor first, and then we can, uh, give a report back.
I'm all in favor of that.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of just simply move this out blindly. We need more information on it, and Matt, you okay with that?
Yep, let me know when.
We're having our meeting on March, on, uh, uh, April twenty-eighth, correct? Is that what we voted on? For seven o'clock?
Yep.
So, I guess you and I will meet at six. Actually, we never really discussed what time we're gonna be doing this budget workshop meeting, it'll be us, and we can do it at eight.
Is Mr. Mancini gonna speak to all of council about this?
The committee's gonna report back what we think.
I would like to hear from Mr. Mancini, the lot selection, especially on block number twelve, looks very strategic to me. It looks like it would interfere with anyone else's ability to develop there if we do those, those.
Then, then what we'll do is this, at seven o'clock.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Mancini.
At seven o'clock, we'll have Mr. Mancini come in, and that, that bypasses the committee. We'll just simply have him make his presentation, and hopefully we'll have a larger printout screen to be able to digest this here thoroughly, and then immediately after that, cause he wants to go home, then we'll do the, uh, budget workshop.
Sounds good, sounds good, thank you.
Moving forward here, we have, um, uh, repaired gravel roads, this is a simple one. We've had historically two roads that have been in need of road repair. If you notice that there's a pile of, uh, DJ material out there in the parking lot between the city hall and the Rizley School, that is gonna be used to, uh, repair some of Seventh Avenue West, which goes that house. The old former Mrs., uh, uh, Plemonson property, that is a horrendous road, and also Mrs. Faith's property. So, bulk of that material's gonna be used for, uh, Seventh Avenue West. Mrs. Faith has a short stretch that needs to be done, and we crowned it the one time, and it just washed right out the next, uh, storm. The DJ material will not wash out, so we need to do that there. So I think it was, I think it's a total of what, maybe three hundred dollars for a load of material, maybe two fifty? I don't even remember. Uh. So that's that. Moving over to the, uh, sand and gravel ordinance. We've been taking, we've been kicking this can down the road a long time, and I don't think that we're gonna discuss this now in two minutes. But, my suggestion is, I think we actually, guys, we do gotta go back to having workshop meetings, as simple as that. We have too big of an agenda, with too much arguing, it goes on, and we can't finish. And we're not making sound decisions, but are rushing through everything.
Mayor, if, if I may, I sent the mayor and council a memorandum with, uh, attachments back on January twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-one, uh, explaining this issue, uh, to council, providing copies of all the backup documents, um, so that everyone had the benefit of all the information. What's transpiring here is that the Estelle Manor ordinance actually mirrors the Pine Lands regulations, except as to depth, and, uh, it there's some speculate, nobody can explain why there's a, why there is a variance between what the ordinance feels is acceptable, what the deed feels acceptable, other than suggesting there might have been a type of graphical error when the ordinance was, uh, originally adopted, because literally, it's almost word for word, what, what Pine Lands provides. Uh, and I highlighted all that language for everyone in my memorandum. So what this taxpayer wants is asking to, uh, council to do is to, um, adopt an ordinance with a depth that is consistent with what Pine Lands already permits. Uh, so, uh, that's what they're asking, uh, and, uh, they have, they have engineering studies from Adams Reindman, and from another engineering firm that, that indicate that it, it would not be a burden on the land, or hazard. So, thi- this, this taxpayer has been patient for a year, uh, to hear council, as to whether council is interested in entertaining this ordinance. If the ordinance, if, if the change in depth is not permitted, apparently that will mean that the, uh, this business operation will probably close. Uh, because they're reaching the maximum depth. So, that's what, that's what I have to report, uh, Mayor.
Okay. Um. Once again, I think that we need to really, this is a workshop meeting, this could actually take a thirty-minute to an hour conversation to figure out what, what we wanna do, why we wanna do it, and the benefit to the city, if in fact, that we're gonna be doing this. Um, I know there seems to be a monetary value that we could achieve from doing this, so this is not the time to discuss it. It's just not.
I should also note that the taxpayer has indicated that they would re- they would reimburse the ci-, uh, the city for, um, the estimated engineering fees to review this potential situation. You recall, uh, Mr. Fralinger does work for the owner of the sand and gravel pit, and the matter was kicked over to con-, to the conflict engineer. Uh, I got an estimate from them on what their review fees would be, uh, presented it to the taxpayer, and the taxpayer has agreed to, uh, to reimburse the city for those fees.
Okay.
May I ask you a question, please? We have kicked this can down the road for a long time, and, and, uh, we need to act, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's getting silly. But I do have a question. To the extent that we are discussing, uh, harmony with Pine Lands and other authoritative bodies as, as justification for doing this, why don't we instead posit this as, in seeking harmony with Pine Lands, this is what we wanna do? And then it otherwise falls to the advantage or disadvantage of, of landowners and neighbors, however it falls. If we're positing this in the, in the name of harmony with those that have greater authority than us, it, it's, it's a natural selection. Am I wrong, Mr. Solicitor? Uh, it would put us in, in harmony with Pine Lands. It would make our regulations consistent with Pine Lands. And, to be honest with you, Pine Lands is generally the most restrictive agency that governs our, our lands. Uh, and our ordinance is far more restrictive than the Pine Lands regulation.
Guys, I gotta tell you, if, if you're not aware, there's a very serious problem that's going on over there, uh, with ATVs going in and out there at all times of the day, and now even at night. And, I don't know if you're aware, but some kid just got transported out there by helicopter, uh, got seriously injured. And it's, it's just a non-occurring offense, uh, uh, it's just non-occurring occurrence going on there. If we're gonna do this, I would actually like to put a caveat in it, that means that we're helping them, and able to satisfy some of the neighbors nearby that are calling me almost on a daily basis, and I tell them, you know, you gotta call the state police, we have no enforcement of being able to do anything, um, tell them they gotta put a fence around the park. That's anything fence.
Well, in my discussions with their attorney, I'm not, I'm not sure they would resist that.
And while they're at it, they could put a fence around our property too. They're gonna be making a tremendous amount of money. We've got a pit that we don't use, but very once in a blue moon. And the reality is, what's gonna happen? They put a fence around their property, now they're gonna come on our property.
I, I don't, I don't know of any authority that we have to require anybody to do an off-site improvement of that nature.
Well, you know, Randy, we're giving them the building, it's just gotta, you know, if we're gonna allow them to do it, now they got a whole brand-new, uh, mining operation that cost them a fraction of, uh, a fraction. So, you're telling me that they wouldn't do that, and I'm telling you I think they would.
Uh, yeah, but you're, you're saying to them that we might entertain this idea if you do this. Like, that doesn't sound like that's legit to me. Like, you're saying, if you do this for me, I can do this for you.
No, we have a contingent that if we're doing this, you know, we, we think that it's, uh, it's got merit to it, but you know, we also would like to have the entire pit area enclosed, because it's a public safety matter, and there's just kids going in and out of there at all times, and it's. And it's a liability to Pearson as well as it is to us. So we would be better off just to, you know, if we're gonna do this, put a clause in there that says, hey, fencing the entire property. They're a lot, and are a lot.
I don't, I don't.
Pearson is a very sharp firm, a very large and very resourceful and very well-experienced, ongoing cons-